City Council, tonight is Monday, May 17th, 2010. This evening, City Council is meeting in regular session. We do have a forum with all members of council present. Next item on our agenda is dispositions of minutes from the special session held April 26th, 2010, and the regular session held May 3rd, 2010. Do I have a motion?
My motion might be accepted.
Motion in second, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been accepted. Under Communications, I have several things I'd like to bring up. We are in receipt of comments regarding rezoning of North Court Street from Beverly Flanagan and Christine Miles. Both are soundly against rezoning that area. Could you hand me here, clerk?
Remember, we need your hearing.
Oh, and we have a CDBG Community Development Block 3 and Public Hearing scheduled for June 17th at 7:00 P.M. I'm sorry, June 7th at 7:00 P.M. Boy, thank God Debbie's here, I'd never get anything right. And that will be here in council chambers. Thank you, Debbie. One other thing I am in receipt of is an email from Tracy Kelly, very interested in the LGVTA Committee to move Athens forward. Well, I'm going to pass that on to you for your committee to take up hopefully at your next missed opportunity time.
Yes.
Are there any other communications anybody wishes to share with council? Members, say it.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we accept the auditor's report for the month of April.
Second.
Motion in second, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The reports have been accepted. On to reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wild.
You said you cover the public hearing, I don't have to cover that, as you said, 7th of June, and that's for the formula stuff. The other thing I just want to let people know about is that the Athens City Disabilities Commission is essentially having a challenge by choice disability simulation this Friday coming up. They're going to let, they're going to challenge various people to actually simulate a disability. I have actually volunteered to be one of those people, I think Jim said he might do it, is that right, or, okay. So that's going to be a participation where we have experienced firsthand what a disability is, and at 5:00, 7:00 at the community center, we'll have a debriefing on how it goes, so it's open to the public.
Very interesting. Very good. Any other comments for the mayor? City Auditor Kathy Hecht.
No report.
Law Director Patrick Lang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a brief report this evening, a rare bit of good news that I get to share with the council here. I had actually just noticed this, one of my responsibilities as law director, and typically it's the most attention that gets paid to the law director's office, is often in my role as the chief city prosecutor, responsible for misdemeanor crimes throughout the county, particularly if there's a high-profile case, or something like Palmer Fest, or a big event in which there's a lot of arrests made, but actually, most of the time that I spend on my job is in my other role as the general counsel for the city, both for elected officials and appointed officials throughout the city, and just handling legal affairs for the city, be we a plaintiff or defendant. Anyway, as part of that role, every year, we are, when working with the city auditor's office, file a statement that goes on to the state auditors, basically listing any pending litigation in which the city has been named as a defendant, and it just caught my eye as I was preparing this year's report, which council has been copied on, that in the first year that I had done this, it was shortly after coming into office and filing the report for the previous year, we had had 11 pending cases at that point, which was down to six last year, and this year, we're down to four pending civil matters in which the city has been a named defendant. So I want to be clear that I do not take any credit for this at all, but that it is a piece of good news, and I don't get to share good news publicly with council very often, so, thank you.
Very good. Comments for the law director? On to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 5210 is an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title 41 Site Plan Review. Member Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move to adopt 5210.
Second.
We've been discussing this for quite a while, this was a review of the Title 41 Site Plan Review. The amendments were pretty straightforward, a lot of different types of definitions were streamlined and redefined, some of the things that the planning director and the code enforcement director would like to have seen put in also were amended to the site plan review, and it was the result of many committee meetings with various members of the community.
Further comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 5210?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 5310 is an ordinance granting a revocable license to the owner of 55 Elmwood Place to replace an existing fence on the city right-of-way. Again, member Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt 5310.
Second.
This is a straightforward granting of a revocable license. This is a particularly important revocable license to put this fence, to replace the existing fence, because it does go around a swimming pool. All the paperwork and everything has been put in and has been signed off.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 5410, a lengthy one, an ordinance closing a portion of Court, Washington and State Streets from 7:00 a.m. on Saturday, July 17th, to 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, July 18th for a family music festival, Boogie on the Bricks, and Ohio Brew Week, suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title 13, Section 130410, Unnecessary Noise in the Downtown Area, and Title 7, Section 70526B1, City Garage Metered Parking Rights and Regulations. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 05410.
Second.
Thank you. Simply, this is the culmination of two events here, Boogie on the Bricks and Ohio Brew Week, which will be held, as noted, on July 17th. The necessary aspect of this is closing Court Street and part of Court Street, Washington Street, and State Streets. And then, as you noted, the two sections there, unnecessary noise and the parking garage, metered parking will be suspended. That is all, thanks.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 5210 has been adopted. Ordinance 5510 is an ordinance amending ordinance 00410, authorizing the mayor to extend the current contract with the Lakefront Lines, Inc., and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of 05510.
Second.
And this is to, as the title explains, to extend the contract for Lakefront Lines. That's the company with whom we do business for our inter-urban bus routes that go between Athens and several urban areas in the state. And this extends it to later in the summer for the contract.
Further comments? Mayor Wild.
Again, this is part of the intercity bus program that we're revamping to add the additional route to Cincinnati, as well as Columbus. This would open up, we have designated, started the paperwork for the designated grant administrator being Athens-Hocking Perry Community Action. The paperwork should be going through right now. We will get some stimulus buses, which you can see at your first reading of, I think, one of your, oh, 5610. This extension is to give us more time to get all the paperwork and all the routes and everything done, as well as open up the bidding for the bus service. It has to be bid out again, so we will not necessarily get it, but at the same time, we still want the service continued to then.
Other comments? Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, are we accepting? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 5510?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. There are no ordinances for second reading, we jump all the way to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 5610 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $1.5 million of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring three new buses and declaring an emergency. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this ordinance, the title explains the 1, 2, 3, 4, 4 and 1/2 pages of text pretty succinctly. We're anticipating the issuance of the bonds, $1,500,000, to purchase the three buses that the mayor was speaking about. We will be reimbursed 100% by some stimulus money that we have been awarded to increase our inter-urban bus lines from Athens to Columbus and to include Athens to Cincinnati. We will get these additional buses to run those routes. And there's been a lot of discussion among the auditor, the treasurer, and the mayor's office about the best way to acquire this money until we get the stimulus money reimbursement, and bonds seem to be the best way to go. So this is the first reading of that ordinance. And the mayor?
I am hearing that we may need a suspension, or is it ordinance 57?
I was planning on 57, I didn't know about this one.
We don't need this?
Do you want to suspend it, should we?
Yeah.
Probably should. I'm sorry. Again, you see the July 31st deadline for the lakefront, so you can tell the time is going to be tight to get this bond put in place and the buses ordered.
We have to have the money and a purchase order in place before you can order the buses, you know, our rule. You're not allowed to spend money you don't have, and so probably we should, because July will be here, and I don't know how long it takes to get the buses, but it's not a overnight thing. And I just might comment also that this ordinance, we've seen a couple of these recently, are prepared by our bond counsel, a legal firm out of Columbus, to make sure that all the legal issues are put forth, and this is actually a note, a one-year note, that we're taking out, and after some discussion, it was agreed that we would go with Hocking Valley Bank, which is named in here, as opposed to going out for bid nationally, as we do for another one of our notes, and this is obviously the quickest way to get the money also.
Okay, Mr. President, let me back up and say that I'd like to consider ordinance 5610 under suspension of the rules.
Motion in second to consider 5610 under suspension of council rules.
In the re-
Further discussion on suspension only, for the reasons already stated by the auditor, I would assume.
Yeah. The mayor and the auditor said so.
All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 5610.
Second.
Again, for the reasons noted, that the deadline for having all this in place is July 31st, and that seems a good ways away, but when we're dealing with banks and government entities, it ain't very long, so.
It isn't very long, okay. Yes, Mayor Wild.
I would point out, the anticipated length of ordering a bus like this is at least four months, so even if we enter a contract with a bus service, they will have to have some buses of their own to actually run the system. The idea, we will own the buses and lease them to the company, whatever company is chosen. We'll get paid back by this ARR, a stimulus money for this, and again, it's very, it's going to be tight timing already, just to get the buses up and running by before, again, a minimum of four months, maybe six, so the anticipated note will be out in about six months maybe. So we don't anticipate a full year, but we schedule it that, just in case.
Other comments? Member Galzney.
I know I asked about this last time, but just in case anything changed, I know it costs a bit of money to float a bond, and I'm wondering if that's going to be reimbursed as part of the process?
We plan to do that, yes.
We, we're not floating a bond, this is a note, a one-year note, straight interest rate. If we pay it off early, that reduces the amount of interest that we owe.
And there's really no fixed rate for the leasing of it, so we could probably reimburse ourselves with the lease.
And actually, we did finally get confirmation too, from ODOT, that the interest that we do incur would also be reimbursable.
Great, thanks.
So there's ways of getting it back.
Other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. On to ordinance 5710, it's an ordinance amending the 2010 Appropriation Ordinance. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I would like to request that we consider ordinance 5710 under suspension of the rules. There are several things happening in this appropriation ordinance that need to happen fairly quickly. We talked about these in committee last week. The station number two in the fire department has a pretty bad leak in the roof, we need $23,000 appropriated to fix that, and we've had two pretty strong rain events, we really don't want to let that go much longer. And then, we've got the $1,570,000 for the purchase of three buses that we've just suspended, so we'll add that, and another sentence about repaying the note when the reimbursement is received. Now, that could be a while, but it's included in this group of ordinances. We talked about the Cable Access Fund, their control room here, the heat has begun to affect the equipment, and we've lost our picture several times here. Again, that needs to be done sooner than later. The Mansfield House needs $10,000. The Mansfield House is the house where the Athens Convention Visitors Bureau is housed, at a very nominal rent. We own it, they rent it from us, we are responsible for repairs. There is a beam, this is an old, old house that has been refurbished, there's a beam in the second floor, this two-story house, there's a beam in the second floor that's giving way, needs to be fixed, so that, it could be a very dangerous situation. Again, needs to be done fairly quickly. The Armory, down at the end of Court Street, also has a leak in the roof, it needs to be fixed, $2,000 worth. And then, we have a request from Andy Stone's office, they would like to implement a plan and a map for the water systems in the city. Member Bain, do you know more about that than I do?
Yeah, they're going to hire a firm to work through an interface between what would be the typical GIS software and the AutoCAD software that the user making drafting maps for their plans, and what they'll be able to do then is to do some tests and figure out what would be the best way to deal with our overcapacity on the south side with water, and also potentially use it for a stormwater utility. It's a very inexpensive way, since they have skills to get it done before, remember, previous times we asked about a water plant, because this is 1976, and Mott had changed on the south side since 1976, and they, we were talking about 100,000, luckily, we didn't spend it. We'll have a living plan this way, because they'll just keep updating it. Software is wonderful.
These were, I believe these were my explanations for why we want to suspend.
And possibly why we may want to adopt, hopefully.
Yeah, well, we'll get to that, yeah.
Is there further discussion on suspension of the rules on ordinance 57? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 5710.
Second.
For all the reasons we've talked about.
Further discussion? All those, yes?
I just thought I should add something, in case anybody questions this, the mayor and service safety director picked up on this earlier. We are appropriating actually $3 million for those $1.5 million worth of buses in here, in case anybody's noticed that. In reality, and I put unappropriate balance sheets and amended certificates of resources in all of your boxes today, in reality, we will bringing it, be bringing in $3 million. We will get a million and a half from the bank, and then when ODOT reimburses us, we will be receiving another million and a half dollars. Of course, we will be using that money to pay back the note, so we will only end up with a million and a half dollars in our buses, but because of the way our accounting works, so if everyone sees, we've also increased our resources in the transportation fund by $3 million. That's because that's the way this process is going to work.
When I went through my box as soon as I got there, believe me, the $3,640,000 jumped right out at me.
That's what's in there.
I was assuming that's what that was about, so.
That's what it is, because we actually will be receiving that money and processing that through our system, although it will all be going back out, either to repay the note or the buses.
And again, it is an intercity grant award, so money that the administration and everybody's worked together to bring in. Mayor Wild.
And you'll notice, the majority of these are infrastructure issues, particularly the roofs and the air conditioning and Mansfield House.
Yes.
They're necessary.
So I believe we're up to adoption of 5710? Is there further discussion at all? Yes. Member Butler.
Thank you, sir. I just might add that when council toured the fire departments, both stations, we were appraised at that time of some of the challenges that the roof was dealing with, so this is something that was on our radar, that might need to be addressed in the near future, and the near future is now.
The rain.
Yeah.
In the near future.
Yeah.
And after all the rain that we've dealt with, I've also found out my roof at home needs to be repaired, so.
We're not trying to do anything.
You're not helping out at all, no, okay. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 5710?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 5810 is an ordinance declaring certain buses no longer needed for municipal purposes. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you'll see from the detail of ordinance 5810, several pages back after the agenda, the city is eliminating or going to dispose of several of our older buses. They are as old as 1991, 1993, 1999, 2002, and 2003, and so we'll be obviously replacing some of them with the new buses coming in.
Mayor Wild.
We're heading buses in the city bus system, Athens Transit Bus System. We had one slated for last year as a cap improvement, we got an extra one through the stimulus money. If you look at the 91 and 93 Gillens, are the ones that we're using for leaks, we're on University Courtyard, when we had the contract with that, they are both non-functional. I believe the transmission's bad on one, the engine's bad on the other. I was under impression that a Dodge van had already been abandoned, so it's redundant in that sense, but we can put it in anyway. The other two, the 2002, 2003 Fords, are, they're worn, but as I say, since we're actually one ahead in terms of bus replacements, we may as well retire these right as they're ahead, and as you can see in section two there, talks about authorized disposal to governmental agencies and nonprofits. And mostly, that has to do with the fact that there is a mobility coordinator for the county that's working on trying to bring all the different bus systems together and transportation systems for the various organizations, and we feel that maybe this is something to sweeten the pot, if need be, if it happened, if it occurs. A lot of it will depend on what goes on, and I'll keep informed on that.
Very good, thank you. Comments for the mayor? Under ordinance 5910, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29 Housing Regulations to require carbon monoxide detectors in residential rental dwellings and rooming houses. Member Kuhn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Athens City Code Title 29 Housing Regulations is being amended to add carbon monoxide detectors. It already includes fire alarms and smoke detectors. Paragraph C of 29.33.06, multi-family dwellings states, that's kind of long, "Carbon Monoxide Detectors, all multi-family dwellings and rooming houses shall be equipped with a carbon monoxide detector by September 1, 2011. The carbon monoxide detector shall be UL listed and equipped with an LED readout indicating parts per million of carbon monoxide gas for continuing monitoring, and shall contain a UL battery backup. The owner or his or her agent shall be responsible for checking each carbon monoxide detector with each new lease. Thereafter, the occupant shall be responsible for maintaining the carbon monoxide detector in proper operating condition. In all dwelling units used for rental purposes, at least one carbon monoxide CO detector shall be installed in the immediate vicinity of the sleeping area, same level hallways. A sleeping area is defined as the area or areas of the family living unit in which the bedrooms or sleeping rooms are located, where bedrooms or rooms ordinarily used for sleeping are separated by other use areas, such as kitchens or living rooms, but not bathrooms or closets. They shall be considered as separate sleeping areas for the purposes of this section. Two, when bedroom or sleeping areas are not fully enclosed or separated from other living areas within a living or sleeping unit, the carbon monoxide CO detector shall be installed nearest the area designated for sleeping. Three, the carbon monoxide CO detector shall be clearly audible in all bedrooms within the dwelling units when all intervening doors are closed. When more than one sleeping room occurs within a dwelling unit, one detector may serve more than one room, provided the required exits from such sleeping rooms are in a single private corridor within 15 feet of the detector. No person shall, without privilege to do so, knowingly move to face, damage, destroy, or otherwise improperly tamper with a fire extinguisher, smoke detector, or carbon monoxide detector required to be installed pursuant to the provisions of this chapter, so as to destroy or diminish its effectiveness or availability for its intended use." 29.33.07 is for single dwelling units, and it just repeats the same, the same language. And then, 29.33.08 is the penalty section, which states that "Any person violating a provision of this code shall be deemed guilty of a minor misdemeanor and fined not more than $100 each day that a person continues to violate a provision of this code shall constitute a separate and distinct offense." However, there is another little wrinkle that I wanted to mention to council. Council Clerk Debbie Walker received a phone call today from Rudy Leatherman, who is a local person here in Athens, who works for Coad, and is a former heating contractor, I believe, and he's a combustion analysis expert, and he heard that we were considering requiring CO detectors in rental units, and offered to come to council, he actually was available to come tonight, and present a demonstration. He would bring carbon monoxide with him and demonstrate that UL-approved carbon monoxide detectors do not work at low, lower levels. They do not alarm, I guess, at the levels that he thinks are dangerous, and so he would like to come and demonstrate that. He is not available to come to the next committee meeting, but could come to the one after that, is that right, Debbie? And so, and he also, I guess, said that we could bring carbon monoxide detectors from home, and he would be willing to use them as part of his demonstration, so would council like him to come?
Council rules provide that anybody wishing to speak to any ordinance is given three minutes, and if other council, if the demonstration would take longer and other councilmen would like for it to continue, that's how we would handle it, once it's out of committee.
All right, I'll call him. Thank you.
Other comments on ordinance 59? Ordinance 6010 is an ordinance to resell property on Court Street and State Streets from B3 to B2B. Member Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was reported out of the 2B, from B3 to B2B. We've had several committee meetings on this and public hearings concerning this issue. I think many issues have been raised about it. There was some discussion about changing the Planning Commission recommendations, however, this current ordinance does not do that, because in order to do that, you have to have a supermajority, and I don't think this council will have a supermajority. Also, I don't, as my planning nerd person comes out, to do zoning, I don't think it's good to amend zoning districts for specific little areas and give them special accommodations, because that makes it very messy in the zoning, the code and such. I did have a meeting with Paul Ove, the planner, and this has been something I did have a meeting with Paul Loeb, the planner, and this has been something that Paul Loeb and I have talked a lot about, is updating our zoning code, because quite frankly, it's very antiquated, and it does not deal with density increases very well. And I think that the issues that we've been covering, from Milfest, Palmerfest, noise ordinances, parking issues, and all these sort of things, it shows that we need to address this from a larger perspective and not do these little changes of zoning here and there. And so that's mainly the reason why I would not recommend putting in any other warehouses and different sections on this and present the thing that, directly from the planning commission recommendations.
Other comments on ordinance 60? Really? Okay. On to announcements and other business. Committee meetings next, Paul?
Safety.
Safety. The usual and requisite finance?
Transportation.
Transportation. Okay. Opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda.
I'm getting a minute.
And I wouldn't either. You might get stepped on by former council member Ed Baum.
Ed Baum, 20 Sunny Side Drive. I'm glad I didn't delay any longer in getting here. I'd have missed the meeting altogether. I read an article in, I think it was the News or the Messenger, I sort of lose track of which one, that city council is considering a temporary rate increase in our income tax to cover streets. I wholly support that. I think it's long overdue and we desperately need it. But I have a concern, and it's a concern that goes back probably historical in nature. And I'll give you two examples that are the basis of that concern. One is if you think back to when the Ohio Lottery was introduced, it was going to be a big add-on for education. And what in fact happened over a period of time, the amount of money that the state normally gave to education got smaller and smaller, and was filled in by the lottery. Second example, in 1964, the City of Athens initiated an income tax. It was by council vote, and the citizens were little unhappy that council had decided to start an income tax without asking them. So there was a referendum, and city council wanted no, because the no would have been keep the city income tax. And they put for this nice little brochure, and you say, how does Ed still have something that goes back all that time? Well, I'm a pack rat. But let me read you something. There's a whole series, Why Keep the City Income Tax? And on the back, if I can find it, it says, oh, duh, 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 duh. How will the income tax money be spent? Aha. 25% goes into the general fund. 75% will be spent for capital improvements. 75%, which if you sort of translated that down today, would mean capital improvements would have an awful lot of money. Where has it gone? Well, it's gone to a little bit here, a little bit there, police, fire, Arts West, community center. And the amount of money available for capital improvements has gone down and down and down, which means we're now in a problem like the university residence halls are. We've ignored what we needed for a long time, and now we have to make it up. And so my concern is that city council be quite clear that any money be an add-on, it not be a replacement, it not be in lieu of additional increases of a capital funds, but that in fact you assure the voters that this will be used for the purpose for which it's intended, and no other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Comments, very well taken. Is there anyone else wishing to speak before council tonight? Seeing none, and seeing that number nine on our agenda tonight is an executive session. There are always certain limited reasons that council can go out of the sunshine and have a meeting without the public watching and without the cameras going, and one of the reasons is pending an eminent litigation, and that is the reason the council will be meeting an executive session. It takes a motion, a second, and a roll call to move in and to move out of executive session. Once we come out, there will be no other items on our agenda except an adjournment. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
I'm motioning to move into executive session.
Do I have a second? Member Butler. Member Butler?
Yes. Who to include?
Oh, I'm sorry, and I always forget that. And who all do we need? The usual suspects. I think the service safety director is being asked to join us tonight, the mayor, the city auditor. I will be there at least for a good portion of it. So again, let's start our roll call. Member Butler?
Aye.
Kuhn?
Aye.
Bain?
Aye.
Sands?
Aye.
Chris? Okay, I know we've got quite a few people in the audience that would like to ask questions of their council members. The clock I'm looking at over here says 8:06. At 8:25, can we ask that all questions and everything be completed and that everyone leave so that we can move into our executive session? Thank you very much.